Okay, the time is now 5:00 p.m. and I call this administrative meeting of the City of Ozarks. So this evening we have the public hearing for the matter of rezoning 308 Campus Drive and 189 Heritage Road. So this time I call this for the hearing open. Do we have anyone in attendance for or against the rezoning of 308 Campus Drive and 189 Heritage Road? If you have, if you are, if you from all of us, let's be... If anyone has any questions? So with that, I will call this public hearing to make close. This time will be needed in one of the next meetings. So after a call to order a prayer and pledge allegiance, we will review minutes from the regular council meeting held on November 7th, late February. Council members, do you have any questions about those minutes? Item number four is actually setting the agenda. Item number five is the ordinance for the rezoning of 308 Campus Drive and 189 Heritage Road. Item four, city committee. Do any council members have any questions about the rezoning? Item number six is work orders for young adjustments and a reappointment for the investment development board. Do you have any questions?
The investment development board, they don't know, I don't agree to continue to serve. That is the board, they're sorry with me, so I think it's true to continue to serve. But two of them are solving the justice board to inspire and one to resign. And we're asking that if you find those people are willing to serve, you should have a copy of that term and let's go out somewhere else.
Council members, do you have any questions or concerns or comments on these appointments or things? Item number seven is a write-up resolution declaring surplus property in the police departments. Director of the order, do you have any feedback on that?
Are we doing this by rights?
No.
We got two bids, we've got two bids in our old regional system that we want to surplus. One of them is for non-control, that is just for a lot and since it took no more money, one of them is from the PD. And then we have moved over to the new regional system that y'all approved. Your flow is, it's a decision to get to PD, but it's up and running. And so I just asked you surplus the old regional system, which is no good at this point. And we always got people that won't try to buy it, so y'all surplus will put it out.
Council members, do you have any questions for Director Warren on that surplus property?
No.
Director Warren, it's basically because they could say good for a second, because item number eight is positions within the fire departments.
Okay, I think y'all got the top of the one I'm asking for tonight. Since I've been here, I've constantly been looking at all of them, trying to figure out how to bring something that's pushing better position. In the fire service, when it comes to our insurance rating, there's certain things you must meet to get a good grade, to keep a good grade. And this is just one step, because I will be coming back multiple times, hoping it's a while that you will know as a buzz. I'm asking for community risk reduction officer for the fire department. Now, Brett, down in labor terms, we all, it's like a fire marshal. All the cities say that we need, there's multiple things they do, free fire plan, fire prevention, checking buildings and facilities to make sure people meet all regulations from overcrowding and functions. That's what that person would do, and we need, and to just be quite frank with you, this would help us with our salary. And so we don't need bad needs of it. Right now, we have a fire brutality, the police department kind of come in and do the investigation. But the fire department, police department, they're not trained on fire situations. So with this, with this call, community risk reduction officer, he can work along with my investigators as the council prosecutor. So I ask that y'all approve, and that'd help us a big thing for now, bro.
And so, and so we'll be the real ones.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, and, yeah, I'm, I'm, I want to rename positions. They'll be on the same pay scale, but we'll just rename. I want to move captains to captain's and move lieutenant to captains. And so it's just like, it's a name change again, that would help us with our salary, they're kind of chief, it's like same, you get points. So that's why we want to rename the captain, captain's chief. And this, uh, community risk reduction officer, I want him to be a captain's chief. Because of how he trained and just working within fire department coordinating, that person really, really needs to be a captain's chief.
Council members, do you have any additional questions for Director Warren on the creation of this position or the realignment of the fire department? Or renaming?
Fire department, they could go around building, building, especially, it feels like those, but, uh...
Yes, that's what he could be doing, and this person, not only would he do it, but he's going to be coordinating with the fire department. Some of the fire companies, some of our firing units will help do those things. But he was coordinating all that, most of them he was, but the biggest of them is, we still don't have to use the fire department kind of head, but that person is going to be helping coordinate.
Okay, okay, yes, sir. You don't like it, you didn't, you worked with the bid, or you, or, or, how they didn't get what they were...
It's, it's my opinion, I'm with you. Yes, sir, I already have sent it out to the department, asking anybody that's interested in it. And fire department is well aware of what I'm trying to do, and, and you have to ask them. From what I'm hearing from everybody, everybody is all in favor of this, so they know what I'm trying to do. Yeah, so it's coming with me.
Now, keep an eye on the ratings.
Yes, sir, this, this will help us, and, um, because it's almost time for us to have another rating. So I'm trying to get us in a position where we will be in a good position when it comes to...
That keeps everybody's home under the chair, so we'll get better off.
Yes, sir, that's, that's right, you're right.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much. Okay, item number nine is a resolution adopting the rule of procedure for council meetings. Anyone who'd like to comment?
We passed out last week, pretty much a gentleman, a gentleman working with himself. Uh, we said it's changed, we need to make, uh, work on that, I was too, we don't...
Council members, do you have any questions or comments regarding the rules and procedure change?
I think it's a bug that we need to forward, if we already have established the action request form. If citizens have problems, they should do that route first, then, um, you know, others to resolve, and then they can't be up there with us, and then I think that's...
It's fine if you're good, that would have luck, but it would, it would require...
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, I'm not, um, the way it's structured is, if anybody has a request that they would like to address, um, it will be filled out, turned in, um, I will review it, um, and then take it and see if it can be handled by the department head. Prior to anything else being given, that's the normal procedure that should happen. And once the department head has taken it and addressed it, if it still can't be resolved for whatever reason, then it will come back on a new broad question.
The action request form, the legal structure, that needs to be filled out all night, it's a concern. If it comes straight to the fire department, and Heather directs it to me or the department head, all of them, and we follow up and give a feedback on where we are.
I just like to first start out by thanking the citizens of Ozarks for just allowing me an opportunity to serve. We're here only because of you, the citizens. Now, we establish or adopt rules and procedure at the outset. Basically, when we are chapters one and we have an organizational meeting. And we adopt the rules and procedure at that time. And they have been in place, as with other previous administrations, since November of 2020, we adopted those rules and procedure. It appears to me apparently the rules have been defined up until a point whereby the library issue came up. And now we're converting it to trying to change our rules and procedure when we're really over half of our time is all, you know. And like I said, we, they desire to do this more. I don't, it's my right to not think it's necessary to change our rules and procedure. I really don't, can't understand a legal wise. Any proof, any public servant, politician, and often, why they even run is for all. It's going to be confronted with criticism. I mean, that's a gift, if you don't want to be criticized, I mean, you shouldn't wear that. I know people criticize me all the time, I go in Walmart, church, only job, I get criticized all the time. But I don't take it personally, I take it as far as a job, it just comes with the territory. And as far as maintaining, because that type of thing, that's criticism, or criticism, whatever, will happen. Citizens deserve the right to speak, and I don't want to take that right away from you. Often times, we're taking, we're taking away too many rights from people. I mean, it's their right and their privilege to speak, I have no problem with it. Yes, at times, some people may, uh, call names or, or their comments, comments may be disruptive or something. It may be, uh, lead to going to, or any executive session, I understand that, when you're talking to a manager, but now, but the times I share on the campaign. I think things have been going to allow the citizens an opportunity to speak on the agenda items, that none of the agenda items. And with something like this before us right now, uh, I think the citizens deserve a right to speak. Whether they speak or against it, in the form of a public opinion here, or if we want to go into some sort of a town hall meeting, invite the citizens in to let them speak on issues as raised and as visited. I mean, what we're doing, we're trying to silence them. Now, we're requesting that they get on the agenda. When we campaign, the citizens, they may decide that as we're asking for their vote to get on their end. The citizens were there for the last year. If I come to the agenda items, that's still have rights to get a thought like that, without being on the, thank you, I have to turn something in.
Yes, so if you have a chance to read, or read, yes.
It's sort of changing the page, why can't, oh, Chris is changing the page, man.
On agenda items?
I'm getting to the page.
It says, item, item CD, avoid comments or questions concerning agenda items. But it is section seven, the, because I read over multiple times, because I have a question about it. So it says, item B, section seven, the, the order business shall be reviewed agenda items, say right if we are. Then we'll go to public comments questions concerning agenda items. And then after that, if someone, the council still has the power to add anything as an agenda item. So if someone has something and it says, item, publicly goes to the council, section one, maybe you'll reduce to address the council. For the needs to make or request, um, the, it gives timeline, like on a request deadline. But of course, it makes me feel uneasy, but you're probably, if you're reading school government, um, it's essentially a request for, you know, same issue multiple times, um, multiple, multiple meetings. However, the council shall turn it, um, at a subsequent meeting, we have the right to override it of the council.
If they can speak on non-agenda items, that means they can get up and speak in time.
They asked you, I'm trying to address the president, what, okay, well, here, there's several topics here. Agenda items that you have on your agenda, once you have your, uh, burn them up like you did now, with your agenda items. Your president, the fellow ladies, like she's telling, and now, if anyone has comments on your agenda, then you get up and speak. Okay, um, time limits, which we all familiar with, that's, that's one of them, that's the agenda. All right, to be, now Chris spoke, uh, a minute ago, on people who simply have some concern or complaint that can't be resolved outside of taking, like, your time, and that would be picking up the limbs of trash or somebody's own potpourri. Anything that, that can be resolved by one of the department heads, Chris would then refer that to the department head for resolution. If that cannot be resolved, then that person can, uh, and actually, the government department head, if they can't resolve it, you go to the board. If it still can't be resolved, those people can be called to the council to speak to the council. That's, that's another category. Another category, if people do this, they want to speak on anything that would, that would be involving city building. It may be, uh, something that you have made it with, it might be a new time. Those would have to make a request on the Thursday before the huge committee. And that request would be invited, at that point, if it's a legal thing that the council has jurisdiction to cover, then at that point, Chris would place that on the agenda for that person to come and speak. That person also would have a timing, that you would know what is coming in, you would know what the topic was. It would be something that you might want to immediately report to the council. And that's the reason for having the written request, just to acquaint you with what, what the citizens want to tell you. And, and you're entitled to that, this is not unusual, in fact, this is very common. So nobody is denied the right to speak, you just have to do it at that time. But the main reason for the, uh, for the request to be made is number one, make sure it's, it's an area that, that this council can do anything about. Uh, that's number one, number two, that, that you then would present it with what that person wants to talk about. Then you have two or three days to look into, see what you can find out about it. And you're entitled to that, you don't have to sit up and do something brand new. And that, that's, that's all it is, it doesn't deny anybody, anybody.
I think you need another example, and listen, this is long, it's a little hard, because I was back in Harvard. They had like, come here with one night, and they're like, certain things are happening, it is, well, the D's argument took place in this room. Come to find out, and we reviewed my cam, what was said in this chambers was not even towards the law. Uh, the one of our quarters, major record of souls in this public meeting, and what was said was not true. If Chris had put that on his agenda, and Charles had had the opportunity to say, I'm helping that person, not in the open issue, that's, that's the purpose.
We, we're very conscious that, that this is a public meeting, you have the right to speak, which you, you're entitled to have the speeches. And, uh, Councilman Jackson, I, I, I studied this a long time, and I'm sure that, that everything was thoughtful and reasonable and not invading anybody's speech, and I made that report to all of you, and you have expressed that. And I think this, uh, procedure of resolution, it, it did that, for life or death. You're entitled to know what people are going to say, not to blame them, of course, but to shut it, man, so that you can check into it.
Next, you have...
Well, now, Chris, on the flip side of that, and I've seen this happen on a case, sometimes the stuff that will come before us uh, with some request or habit, and we will, basically, if you as a matter of fact were telling it, we will take that up at a later, at a next council, we do that, so we don't have to take it up right there. But now, my mind goes back to the council that was here in 2000, to be exact, I would not own that now. But my understanding was that they changed from what we're going to, to what we have been doing. And there was a reason for that, and I think the reason behind it was to give the citizens the right to govern. You know, in, for, for, that administrative portion, I believe, the way they had, that opportunity to speak on any non-agenda item. That meant bringing up anything before the vote, that they would, you know.
Do you have any, council, uh, council members, have any questions?
I think the chain of crime and the paper and a lot of the stuff, it was way beforehand. We'll even see after the, uh, so we can, we can handle it then.
I like to be better prepared than challenges and, uh... Council members, do you have any additional questions or comments? Um, my only, my only concern maybe is, um, so I have absolutely all of this. So just for the citizen review, um, one of the proposed changes will also be once you are on the agenda, that you are given more time, uh, to speak your concern than previously given. Um, and then, that's a, uh, one, it does help us see issues and have our own chance to address issues or research issues. Um, one of the things that I do agree with the changes on this are, there have been a number of times where someone has come and spoken on something, and I, and I will actually say, can you take that up with our public safety director? Let, let me introduce you to Ryan, he's this person. That's, to me, this is filtering out that and actually putting it within a chain of command. Um, so then, rather than silencing every, say that we've exhausted what we need to do before it gets to us. Um, because a lot, some of the terms, we can't even do, think about it, or we just have to go, hey, can you go over here and help this person? Um, which our department heads are willing to do anyway. Um, and then, at that point, if it is hard getting, uh, resolved, I'm going to say, sorry, they are resolved then, then it comes to us. That's my only, my only comment that I have about this. Um, and the only other, I guess, request that I was, that came to my mind was, is there a way to, what if, it has more out of some, something, some sort of files, see what has been requested, so that we can never be accused of, well, I've been putting this in this request to know it is not directed anywhere, and I'm spreading it into the air. I can see where that can be a concern, but I don't want to, I do still want to be transparent in that, so that we see what has come through the pipeline and what's, what's getting distributed, because we know that Heather's going to do a great job of going, hey, let's send it out there. We know that everyone does, it gets off in the wrong capacity, but I can see where it can be a transparency issue, so that we can see where it's connected. Is that possible?
Wes, we do that, I don't want to answer that question.
Because if there's going to be a form, like a handwritten form, I'm talking about separate from the, from the, the online action request. But the handwritten request on the, so, so it's been amended.
I really, I really, I'm getting a little bit, going to the front. If there are way up to get up and speak about non-agenda items from the forward, what's the difference?
It's just, you know, so the new procedure would say, they, that people need to come up and say, hey, I want to address on this. And if it's something that we can, that, that we can assist them, then we'll put them on it, or it will be put on the agenda as an agenda item. And then, if not, um, if, if the entry is saying it's a high school issue, then it will go to one, but before it ever even gets to us.
I understand all that, I still don't understand, if you can, say anybody wants to get up and speak on non-agenda items, you can get up and say whatever you want, but you don't have...
That's, 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 that's...
That's like, you don't cut that far, huh?
It's not that far out, now, it does say that we have honorize of the, of this.
If y'all have something that you want to hear, you certainly buy, you vote to hear, but otherwise, uh, listen, that is an agenda item that is brought up on your, on agenda, and the comments you have to, the comments I have, the agenda items work. The public can create their own agenda with their own mind.
It says, so if you are looking at section 11, public address to the council. Um, with unanimous consent of the council, a person whose name is not a public agenda may be permitted to address the council. If the council needs the matter to be germanic, current issue, and a delay in the permission request is excusable. request is excusable. So, if it's something that is timely, and we know it is not going to, it's not gonna benefit the person or the city or anything to wait until the next meeting, then we can say, "No, no, we do want to address this thing." So, there is a, there is a clause to say that we can override that, in which...
No, 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 when we get into that, uh, overriding some and not others, getting, it gets to be a in line, who weren't saying, "Well, you wouldn't let these people manage this," or, you know, maybe, you know, collecting the script and making... Uh, I pondered over this even after last night, and I, just in my, in my, I thought about the fact that we've already, many of our hours for the legislature at City Hall, took fourteen hour days. There are some jobs that keep a hold, that they are able to get off on the flag. Particularly at noon. You think the guy that's out there, Puck would be working for Woodcut? You know, they let those guys off at 12:00 on Friday. But if he had to leave, come to City Hall, and try, I mean, he can't get that request in, because the deadline is 12 o'clock on Thursday. So, he's out of luck. Now, we could have some that come into the council meeting and want to present their case, but we're gonna tell them, "You'll have to come back on next Thursday, and then fill out the form, or fill it out online for the following..."
How do you see what was going on?
I don't want to limit the citizen, uh, to be able to speak. Even with speech, that's all they got, I mean, this is limited, that's all we have. And knowing, we're out here, and I don't have even much speeches up there at the moment.
I mean, that's why it says, ultimately, why it's up for debate. Ultimately, why, any thing is proposed and discussed, and given up for debate. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. Item number ten is a authorization for mayor to execute, execute a community that can see development, and why it's obviously, there is a tornado warning. Oh, that's... That's for those, that was a good, that's a notification. So, favor, would you like to speak on the authorization?
Yes, this is like, I think, four-year-old, Austin, New York, guy that fly over the center, that was, we asked the guy to remain a little bit performing arts, started working on it, later we had to have the funding to pay for the initial forty thousand dollars in his bills, so it just kind of died. We had it reactivated, including the eyes on him, so he used paper up front, and the guy would pay us back, and we accomplished the same thing. This is actually...
Yeah. The problem was, that didn't take away the front.
Right. And this thing, I want to speak to court. All right. So, with, uh, this is going to take more, more time to local leaders, so we've got a vote count to department heads, and there are any department heads and constituents that would like to speak on any of these events this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any of these events this evening? Yes, that you would like to come up and state the name for us?
I want to go to the street, because I didn't know, I got it now. Uh, few years ago, a couple years ago, we passed for public hearing. We went into that public hearing, and at that public hearing, we said, "We're not gonna have any more public hearings, where we're gonna address issues of the citizen. All you have to do is calm down and speak to the council on the items that are not on the agenda, items that are on the agenda." But what we're doing now, we're taking rights of one of the citizens. You can example, Chief, I would know, say, I thought this. Yesterday, and Chief of my father, I had a serious, serious issue, serious issue. But with this rule, I wouldn't be able to talk about it today. It was a serious issue that deserved to be handled, not me. I had a house burned down, total loss. By the way, we got it, it was a job, but they had a problem, serious problem, that that problem should not have been there. I'm not saying that the house burned down as a result, or it's a total loss, it was burned down, it should not have been a total loss. I'm not saying it's a total loss because of that situation that the father, father had to deal with, but ended up doing a job, and so we accept that. But I wouldn't be able to talk about that, because I had no intention of talking about it today, on the top of Chief yesterday, I talked to the fire chief yesterday, and I hope that you all addressed that item this morning, not tomorrow, because it's something you can't wait. But what we're doing now, look like we're just chipping away at the rights of the citizens. Apparently, we're saying things that might not work. You can't control what we say, and it's what we say. When you're not running doors, we put votes, we don't have any power for the voting. Let me know what you're looking out for. That's not fair. You asked for this position, no, the citizens are not afraid. You asked that. If you didn't want that, you shouldn't vote, you shouldn't apply for it. You should not take away citizens' rights, it's happening all around this country. We have a right to speak. Don't do that. Now, that's not gonna set out.
Just for, can I ask you a question, Mr. Long?
Yes.
So, you said, just, you had an issue yesterday, but you talked to the chief about it?
We haven't, we haven't decided, okay, what we said.
So, so your issue was resolved with the, with the chief?
I don't know whether the issue was resolved, but I spoke to the chief, he would not get it resolved.
Okay, okay. So, would it have been something that you would have to have come and told us about?
I would have to tell somebody absolutely without a doubt. If Chief would get into what happened, he'd...
No, I, I mean, I was just...
Without a doubt, somebody needed to know the exact moment. I would hope that somebody would have corrected that issue last night. It was a serious situation that would affect the community.
Do you feel that the chief is handling it, do you have faith in the chief to handle it?
I have, I have faith in his handling of it. I have no reason to not believe, I mean, it's deep, oh, the chief, and I had no plan to go without saying anything about it, but this situation, which you're creating now, would not, if I wanted to say something about it, I would not have been allowed to speak of it. It's a serious issue. You're saying about four days, something on the Thursday, about Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, four days for something to happen?
The timeline is something, but with, with Advent being closed on Friday, it's not like we can make it, okay?
Well, that's not true, because we incorporate that right now, when we were working five day a week, that was my request, in order to get everything prepared, so that I can get everything out of the city council meeting, that didn't matter if I was working, you know, Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday, that was something that we put in place, so that I could get everything prepared, and get a city council to talk to Advent at times, so I had nothing to do with it for it too. And that, that's not an issue.
But the issue that's going on here, the...
I, I...
Citizens should not be suppressed, we, this is...
I...
Don't make...
There was a, there was a hand raised over here. All right, so you'll come, you'll come up. You'll say your name, okay?
My name's a lot harder. I think saying either or, kind of a decision, you can have this kind of program, or you can sign up by law. I have used the city complaint system, and nobody was calling me back. I have talked into the mayor, and he didn't call me back. I talked to a city council member, and she didn't call me back. Other than having the right to come here and speak freely, that right would be taken away from me, and all it takes is any of them who are already ignoring me to just be like, "We don't want to go on the agenda." As representatives, you're not entitled to anything, you have a duty to represent the people, and the people have a right to speak. Taking that away, because somebody is worried that somebody might say something bad about them, that is the purpose of having things like this. It's not a coincidence, nobody's fooled, that this wasn't a sequence of events, yes, something happened months ago, or whatever with Margot, but guess what? Nobody moved to have people censor when Margot, whoever the person that came out here said a bunch of stuff. It was only now. Why now? What is the purpose? I have watched you shut down people who started to overstep, even when they had the legal right to do so, and you were just confused about the procedure. You were very effective in saying, "We're not gonna talk about this right now." I don't know why you can't continue to do that, and we can't have a form that we can fill out, and I would love to get a talk page on paper with the department head, so there's a paper trail. But if they're not gonna call us back, what is the point? And you can have, well, you don't have to shut the people up, it would be nice if your jobs would be easier, and there are a lot of people who would take their concerns to a process like that, and say, "Hey, is there something that they can take time for?" To say that because you can do that, you're no longer allowed to speak if something comes up, seems to be kind of ridiculous. Thank you.
All right, this is... Yes, sir.
I started coming to the council meetings in 1984. Since 1984, I've missed seven meetings, and that's only become my mind account. I've never seen a council member attacked by somebody in the audience at a council meeting. Right now, what you have in place is absolute transparency. What it seems to us that you're trying to create is Joe Biden's press council, where you have to submit your questions in advance, so they can write out this blue sheet, so they'll know what to say. You're taking control of what the public has to say, and I don't think that's right, and I don't think you have that right. And you're wrong, you don't have two or three days to do the research, and you're wrong, you don't have a lot of time to do the research. Thursday to Monday, there's nobody here on Friday. That leaves Chris with one day to get a job done. It's not gonna happen.
Do you have any other comments or questions on agenda items this evening? Yes, sir.
Initially, I just had to talk to the questions. Have these proposed changes been publicized to the public since they involve the public's ability to address the council? Are there plans to publicize them?
Well, if they're, if they're voted in, as with any of our procedures or resolutions, we would have to give public awareness that this is happening, the same way that we do our hearings and all that, whenever we pass a resolution, notifications that have to go out on who those are.
So, so clarify the process right here. If a resolution is passed tonight, then at the next meeting, this goes into effect, or... Yes. Okay. So, how can the public present at this meeting, or before this meeting, weigh in on whether we are for or against these changes, when we don't know what we're doing with the changes?
Well, that's, ultimately, this is, this is not new on, on that, and I know that you, you questioned on it, um, or you sent me an email question on it. This is, and this is not any of their, that their, this is my opinion. Um, as a, as a representative of you, I would hope that you have enough faith that when anything is presented to us, that we would still have the best interest of the citizens at heart. And ultimately, in this resolution, if we decide that there is something in it we don't like, then we vote. If they think that it is, that it works, and still achieves the objective of streamlining the process for citizens to get things resolved, but still be able to present, then we would vote again.
I think, um, I think my, my question on that is, you're asking us to put a lot of trust in the council on that?
Yes, because that's what you're wanting us to do.
I'm also wondering if there is any opposition to the idea of publicizing this, tackling the issue, publicizing it, and let the public have a public hearing on...
On...
On these changes.
Yes, it's saying that...
That's up to council, that is ultimately up to council, but also, you don't have to do that procedurally, because we change things all the time that have to do with issues and, and all of that, that you have to...
You're not taking the citizens...
I know, I know, you're not taking the right to change the names as to how it happens to happen, but ultimately, you, but your question now gives them knowing that that is an option, or that that is possible.
So, I'm just wanting to ask you then, all of you council, tackle this issue, publicize the proposed changes, and hold a public hearing, so that the public, who is affected by these changes, we are affected by these changes in our ability to access the council, okay? Give us the opportunity to say whether we're for or against them, with the full information of what's being changed. Because right now, I don't like the wording of these proposed changes, some of it's been ran a lot here, I don't know what those words are, so I don't know whether we're for or against these changes, right? And I can't, if this is passed tonight, then myself and everyone else here, we don't know if we're for or against this, because we don't know what these words are, we don't know what the changes are. Give us the opportunity to see what the changes are, and make our informed decisions on whether we want to support this or not, having a future public...
So, I have a question. So, where was our public whenever we got elected, and we went into executive session to set these procedures?
If it was an executive session?
It was an executive session, it was...
It was, I mean, it wasn't exactly... Executive session's not the correct word, it was our organizational meeting, as Councilman Jackson pointed out, at the beginning of each new election cycle that we're on...
Was that a public meeting where it went to?
No.
Okay, so that's one...
We have our work, we have our...
Oh, it's meeting, it's public, it wasn't, it was...
We held it, we didn't tell us all this here, I mean, I didn't...
So, if it was a public meeting...
No, it's not the organization meeting. Yes, yes, very much so, we have that. Okay, uh, excuse me, yes, it wasn't public, it was a... Wait, 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 we're getting away, we're getting away from it, so we will see your question.
So, if I could just respond on that, um, if that was a public meeting, then whichever public showed up at that meeting, address it, or do it. But you are proposing changing those rules that have been adopted. So, give us the opportunity to understand what's being changed, and give us the opportunity to weigh again on whether or not these are changes that we support or don't. Thank you.
Now, I think, you have to keep in mind, this is a meeting of the council, okay? It's, it's not, it's a public meeting, but it's not a town hall. It's a meeting of the council. The request to speak gives you as a council the right to know what you're looking at, what you, what you want to engage the person with, what you want to know, the questions you might want to ask. If you're a meeting, if it's a council meeting, that's what you're here for. So, the public brings things to you, it's not unfair to the public to have to write them down, they're not denied the right to bring things to the council. You just need to have some understanding of what's been involved to you as a council. Now, if y'all have to have, yeah, I think you have it one time, a town hall meeting. This is not a town hall meeting, this is a public meeting to see what the council wants to do, what, what the wishes of the council is. Nobody's being denied the right to speak, it's just have to do it by the rules.
Is there anyone else that is convinced that... Yes, sir.
Okay, y'all know my name, I'm just trying to call, maybe you know other people. Um, I have several questions. Um, once it's put on the agenda, you said people would be given more time, how much more time would they be given?
This, when it's, when it gets put on the agenda, we are given more time to, that's, is that what you're...
No, how much time would it risk before something...
About, um, four minutes, maybe, four minutes. About four minutes, maybe, four minutes.
So just two minutes more than what they're given to publicly address the council?
Correct.
However, example, last week, we had somebody who came up to speak. She was given two minutes, but people in the community were able to give their time to her. So she got eight minutes, I believe.
Yes. And it says, "No event for March shall ever exceed eight, or ever exceed six minutes." So they're giving extension, but this also removes the time waiting by other workers.
So you're going to run it down to six minutes to the first week. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. There's something about being referred to the department heads to be addressed. How many times would be referred to the department heads to be addressed? Because if you... Okay. If they fill out the form initially, and I'm not talking about the form to address you, the form that's on the website, and it's already been... And I love our department heads, don't get me wrong, okay? But it's already been sent to the department heads. And our department heads told their people, "Go fix this." And somebody didn't do their job, okay? Because that happens. And it gets referred, now they want to come and address you. And it gets referred back to the department head, okay? This is the second time. People get frustrated very...
Well, that's why I asked if there was any way for us to know what is being requested. So if we see someone running all the times and they're setting up being a hurdle, then we can say, "Hey, what's happening?"
Okay. So if they fill out the form with the six that's on the city's website, saying we have a problem, okay, the resolution form, are we all privy to those forms?
That's what I just asked. That's what I...
Yes. How are we going to resolve that? How are we going to ensure... This is my question. How are we going to ensure that you as a council see those forms as well as every one of the request forms to speak to the council?
Well, the request forms to speak to the council are ones that are referred to. Not the ones that are on the website. We don't have access to these.
Okay. So as far as you know, they're going to request to speak to you once. They haven't requested to have this resolved through the department heads prior to that, as far as you know. You don't know this.
Are you talking about...
Okay. I'll give you a live example, okay? Or not live example, but an example, okay? Somebody comes out to my house from the city and they break my trash can. And the city's sending me a bill for this broken trash can now because it needs to be replaced. And I'm going, "Come on, it'll be broken." Okay? So I send in a resolution. It gets sent to Ryan. And Ryan says, "Okay, get rid of the bill, y'all, and billing whoever does that. Get rid of the bill and take our new trash can." They give me a new trash can, and I'm still getting billed for the broken trash can. Okay? Well, now I'm upset. And I'm still getting billed for this new trash can. What's up? Okay? Don't try sending a request to speak to you. Okay? You don't know that I've already sent this to Ryan.
But you can also eat. You can also, like, you can also... You still have to write Ryan's address.
But see, people don't know these things. That's what we're getting on.
People may fall...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's my turn. People don't know these things. The common citizen in Ozark does not... I know this. I have your emails. I have your phone numbers. I have... Hey, what's up? Okay? I'd call Ryan and be like, "Hey, Ryan, what's up with this?" Okay? But the common citizen in Ozark doesn't know these things. The common citizen in Ozark...
You're saying they don't know the procedures, so they're not going to follow the new procedure anyway?
They're not going to know to follow the new procedure. They're not going to comprehend this. They're going to think they can come up here and address you, and then they're going to be upset that they can't address you. And just like a couple of...
That's something for them to take into consideration. So thank you for saying that out loud. That is something that we will take into consideration when deciding whether to vote for this or not. That's the point of public commentary.
I'm one of these people, I think you have to think of every possible eventuality before you put something in place. You have to problem solve much. So making the PDFs, making these into PDFs, whether it's the resolution request, okay, making those available to you at the very least through a PDF form, okay? Or attaching that resolution form, you know, I know it takes extra work for Chris or whoever is standing in this, but here's my next question. What's the timeframe to be placed on the agenda? Once the request comes through to Chris, if you put in the request again on Thursday, okay, what's the timeframe to be put on the agenda? Are they going to be put on that Tuesday's agenda?
Yes, because that's the deadline.
Well, I mean, obviously, if you come in at 11:50 in the morning and there is a legal issue that's unresolved to whatever resolution the county wanted to put on, that's going to have to be rejected to be reviewed. So no, it's not going to be on the agenda.
The deadline is 12 o'clock.
The deadline is 12 o'clock, but that doesn't necessarily mean it goes on automatically. There are things that have to come into play in order for it to be decided whether or not...
See, people don't know this. People don't understand this.
That's why you're talking about...
And this is why, this is why people are asking for it to be tabled and working to be thoroughly reviewed and come back and come back in public hearing so that they can voice these concerns.
All right, yes.
Is my time up?
It's getting ready, yes.
Okay. I just have one other question. How are we going to ensure the council has final jurisdiction for the work that's put on that agenda?
That's what I requested without seeing the PDFs and everything for that.
Same here.
That's right. Yes. Do you have any comments or questions on agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
Y'all know my name, right?
What do you say, Ms. Barron?
I will say, I'm Ricky Galvin, I'm a citizen of Ozark. I'm kind of on the same page with a lot of the words that they just had stated here in that you also received, you received many questions about these procedures and how these procedures are supposed to go. You've also asked questions of Mr. Reed, like, "Is that how that's going to work? How is that going to work?" So it sounds to me like we're not all on the same page in terms of what the new procedures are. It is a lot... I feel like it's a big task for me and citizens to put all this trust into the council to implement changes when I don't know what the changes are. It's like whenever Walmart gives out something that I substituted what I needed, they substitute it for something else. No, I don't need mushrooms instead of the zucchini. That's not going to work for me. But I feel like there is a good enough way for us to be able to think to push them because I don't want this to turn into, well, from your perspective, we're going to do the same way and you all just have to deal with it. I don't like that. I want to say, Ms. Simicak, this is very similar, this idea to what I brought to you originally so that the council would know what is being addressed with whatever you came in on a regular Tuesday and for first and third Tuesdays, and you see a room full of people and media and police presence, you're not immediately blindside, you're like, "Well, now immediately I'm on edge." And I'm going to share my opinion. I don't think that is the... I don't think at all that that's the extending algorithm I should use. I want you to be informed because I want you to see. The only question I have is, regards to all of this, is if someone has sent an issue, they're directing it to the correct party, does that person still get to speak at whatever is currently in? I'm forward somehow, I'm going to try all of you to round off the week, the department heads under your public. And I'll leave the short ones for the co-owners.
Thank you.
To all of us.
Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak on any of the agenda items this evening? Yes, sir.
Can you say something, Marley? I'm a citizen of Ozark. I'm with the county and Brittany in this case, I'm going to be right here. Why don't we discuss this further before we decide we're going to change the whole how we guys are going to do this? And again, this is y'all's house or whatever, but what you guys are doing is you're going to be limited to people that can come up and speak. Like, for instance, I won't be able to do this later without filling out a form.
But actually, on this, you couldn't...
Yeah, fair enough. But really, like, why don't we do some kind of overhaul or something like that? Like, there is a compromise, and it doesn't have to... Because I'm afraid this is going to make all of you guys sick. And I mean, you've already seen the reaction from some of the people here. They're like, "Wow, you're taking away our rights." And that kind of does feel like what's going on. So if you guys could print, like, I don't know, on something in the paper, let people know what's going on and what, how it is going to change, that would just make this all clear. Like, that's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for you guys... I'm not even against the policy. Like, I just want to know more about it. And I think that would actually squash a lot of... And really, if you're voting in favor for this and it's like, you're not giving the public a chance to know about it, it's going to make y'all look bad election-wise. Like, that's... Like, any incumbent is going to be like, "Hey, they're trying to show us up." And if they could run on transparency, then you guys... And just really, just disclose what's going on. That's all. And if you just support, right?
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any of the agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak on any subject this evening?
Yes. This is why I came down, right? I was heading on October 17th, and one of my properties with all the list of us declared to be a nuisance. And I didn't think it was. So, I mean, when I saw it, I couldn't figure out if it was or not. I went by, but I looked at it, and I didn't see a nuisance. So I called someone, and I'm like, "You see this about your grass meeting?" Cut. I said, "Well, okay." It was indeed being cut. So I called my garden, said, "I'm out the next day," and they cut the grass. This was October 18th. You have a meeting on November 7th, and my property was still declared to be a nuisance. So my question is, once this business is prepared, before you vote or have your public hearing on declaring these properties a nuisance, shouldn't the guy who prepared this business, he had two weeks to go back to see if these things have been correct, to maybe remove some of the properties from the list?
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Traditionally, we do have, traditionally, people come up and say, "This one has since been cut. We can remove it from the list."
Mine would be...
So that one was not removed.
No. Uh, one last thing. Now, you said that council, you asked the question, "Trust the council." We trust the council. Don't take our rights. Once you start any one, there's another one, another one, another one. Believe me, I know what it's like. Don't cut our rights. I'm doing it. That's what you do to the citizens. Say, "When we get a new..." When the council wants to get out of the polls, I need you always to sit in there. Get excited.
Mr. Barron, I have a question. What was the property addressed?
Eight twelve, we need a process to get eight twelve, rest of the street, common names. The ladies yard got called her. She said she never got any notice, never got any message. And the check of what you want to present on is certified. I thought it certified that you had to sign for it, return, receive requests, you sign for it, confirm it, and got it. They didn't get it. They were looking at home. But in this case, this yard was cut. If anybody who arrived by there, if anybody who arrived by this property, if anybody arrived by this property, they know it was cut. I don't... I'm not a nuisance. Not in the city, that's what we...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barron, eight twelve, it was noted, it had been cut. Myself and the other compliance officer rode by there, come from one of the hours of contractors, the citizen contractors. But as far as we notifying the owner or we notifying the council, one reason we don't is because the majority of our nuisance properties stay nuisance properties. So we get the permission and approval of being elected as a nuisance property to where we have what we call the B defenders, where we go back later because, okay, they hired a contractor one time, and then now, four weeks later, it's still not been cut. Now, eight weeks later, it's still not been cut. So now we don't waste the council's time with getting approved again. It's considered...
Okay, but you say you went by this property, you thought it had been cut, but you did notify the council?
I don't need to.
That's what you need to do. They need...
I don't need to. They've already approved it.
No, no, they had an approval, they voted on it. And I'm glad it was cut. They need to...
Did your person cut it, or did our city contractor cut it?
I read that.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. I'm our contractor. So we didn't cut it, and I know the city would cut it, but I don't have to come back and waste the council's time.
Well, sir, you have to tell the council, have them to vote on these properties. Don't need to...
It was already voted on. It was already voted on.
No, sir.
That's what he's down on. And that's what it is, and what he's pointing at, is that it was cut if we voted on it anyway.
Yes.
We really didn't have to give it to him, because I think...
Well, that's what, sir, we need to...
That was his complaint.
It was cut. I brought you the picture, you didn't even tell me the nature. It was cut up.
How long was it before?
It was cut the next day after this.
How long was it before? Okay. That's what it seemed like.
It's cut every two weeks. Unless... Now, hold on, hold on, sir. I did have a garden who had a property for both hours. He may have this, I think, two weeks, and within this quarter, he had it on again.
Okay, gentlemen, I'll...
But the point is, I'm going to repeat to you that it is not... Do you have a question?
No. Do the council members do you have any questions?
Well, I was just going to make one thing, if you have a question. That property, we put it in the hole on October 17th.
Yes.
It was current of the public unit. It's in the public unit. Then it came back on November 7th. Now, I took the time to drive by the property, and I saw it being cut myself.
So you saw it, but you still made a decision the next day?
No. I... After our meeting, I went by the property itself and saw it being cut. And I talked to them, and they told me to take it.
Yes, sir.
I did a message in District 70 last weekend. I had a house fire last night. From three o'clock in the morning, I called 911, and the phone rang nine times for somebody angry. And if you don't think that's a long time, you ask, "How do you know nine times?" Trust me, if you count every time that phone rings, you don't understand why somebody had been picked up the first time. Of course, our department came, according to my house on fire, it was approved, I said it probably was. But it gives appreciation for our fire department. It makes you look deep inside and say, "What if? What if? What if?" In my particular case, my wife and I were not supposed to be home Saturday night. And if we had not have been home Saturday night, if I hadn't been outside at three o'clock in the morning with my two dogs, we'd have been working. But nine times, you shouldn't have to wait that long for your next action.
Are there any other comments or questions for anyone in attendance this evening? I'll go to final comments, ma'am.
Okay. First of all, I want to add one more thing to the meeting. Policy change. If I, as a mayor, or Hollis Smith, as O.R.P.A., you tell a program person, wants to talk to county commissioner, we have to go get on that chair. And I've had to fill out forms. I was just like talking about it, but it's very simple policy. But moving on to the left, I wanted to give a shout out to our employees and department heads. I presented to you a Whitegrass United Way issue with five year donations. We have been reaching for ministry from $9,474 to $16,797. We also see the number of employees from 7312, just playing as, as it's originally been under this tough tough the last two, three years. But don't forget the community-wide funding, it's due on Thursday, and as of this morning, I was saying, I still need people to help. I'm sure just help serve and get organized or that kind of thing. The employee incentive lead is... The employee consented meeting, uh, is, uh, on the 30th at 11:30, and help the y'all have parts in that, with that. If you have not seen it, uh, Mr. Sam Jeter, one of our O R P A's, finished 11th in the world in the 2023 World Long Drive Championship, that's hitting the golf ball, and, uh, he, uh, passed it into 400 feet, two yards, uh, far from accomplished, just make sure y'all are aware of that. The cemetery, uh, road issue, the construction of all that, the last meeting, we were able to get that cut prior to the funeral. Uh, we had planned to, we, Ron and I were looking at the date, he plans on trying to routinely keep that push off. But I did want to make sure y'all know, A M A Church claims ownership of the actual cemetery.
No, we won't do it. First mission, that is true.
Okay, how about, of the first mission, so anyway, they claim ownership, and they even charged to be buried there, to put the guy, it's just buried in the location, so. We ride over the cemetery, did some work, but that's not our, sorry, anything about that too. The, uh, houses down here, the Green American Union, they're working on a seventh house now, and, uh, that's been doing fine as well. The open house project, we've been working on, uh, we're in the process of opening that up to the first floor replacement, that's very well a new block for as long as I can remember, but we got the work done, and that, we can open that up, and it opens up a new bathroom downstairs. The, uh, we got some little things like blinds, painting, we put the washer and dryer in there. The chamber commerce was routinely, uh, taking tablecloths and this down to the toilet, and washing, but so, we're gonna be able to do it, uh, there in the open house, so. We do have an offer, a company has an offer, you know, bail profit, uh, we don't know where that stands, but, uh, we do know that an offer has been made. The college housing apartment project, which is called Andrew's Flats, which is next to the college, uh, and went Andrew's in, uh, because that is the old Andrew's area, and that was one of the things we agreed to sell it, that it was some kind of name recognition, uh, there, so. But that property is, uh, they did get finished today, they're very big plus on that, they'll be able to put it down. The, uh, these state gym properties, we were talking about the, uh, gym floor, uh, was wronged whole, because they were short material, that floor was stuck through here on Monday, and I would think that goes to the show of this two days. The Flower Center, uh, abandoned part of the building, I brought that up, y'all, a while back, and we need to address that. One of the reasons we need to address that, under that building is lots of, of asbestos. It's clear that people are going into the scrap heap in the aisles, I've heard that. So we, we got a price on it, uh, to pay last Christmas, this is just on the side of the building, it's $8,600. Tyler and I have been looking for, we would like to go ahead and do that, we're in the process of getting demo prices on the building. A M A has agreed, because of the condition of the building, I mean, that floor, that building will slant foot across the direction. They agreed that the tree will set up, spray the water, keep it wet, during the demo, that they let's demo from the outside, and I'll let it from the back of the building, so. For favor of money, but, uh, we would really like to.
Oh, not the whole side?
That whole side. Um, but, uh, in the meantime, uh, we're gonna talk to somebody in House Coast about completely boarding the, that wood section, where you cannot go in that flat, because it is, it is extremely bad. And you gotta remember, when you're on that first floor, there's a placement in that part, so you're not only gonna follow it, you know.
Right, you know, people.
You don't follow the way, right? So, uh, it's all those things that, uh.
Keep in mind, that kind of, that doing it this way, uh, you know, that entire floor, all of those rooms, have asbestos, tile, and glue throughout the entire building, so we're probably saying, this is probably not even centered, what our asbestos cost would be, by being able to do it this way, and being able to debate it, firstly speaking to A M A, allowing us to do that, because of the die question, you know?
Yeah, I, I was really expecting it, like, probably forty-five thousand dollars, because I was thinking I would, but, but they don't think there's any way to do it, they take the tile up because of the conditions. And I did bury five days, I probably remember it, but I called Mayor Blackwell to talk to him. We did, they asked us to balance the bill, we were watching, back in the eighties. But, uh, I think that's, uh, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Andrew?
I just wanna wish you one, that the Thanksgiving is safe and clear. Yes, and then, as the record there said, I wanted to get a, uh, the story of it. As I stated before, we got two cemeteries, two city-owned cemeteries that we've been over. Why we got people from over that stuff, and down there in race track, you know? And so, I, I hate that happened, but somewhere along the way, I mean, I don't know, they did nothing, but, uh, we kept this one up down here, that's a city cemetery, the race up on, I think, city up on, you got on that, am I right? Am I right, Mr. Ken?
What you asking, hold on.
Right, right, that's a city cemetery. So, so, along the way, what happened is, we lost touch with upkeeping the Black Thorns Cemetery down in Red Street, if you will. And so I would like to see us recover from that, because it's only right. That's the right thing to do, and the only reason why the first mission had to happen was just took this on, is to upkeep the cemetery, who's charging you, yes, they do charge the burial, and that money is used along with trying to keep the cemetery, but again, I think it's so wrong that we honor and have kept honoring this city cemetery on one spectrum, but not the city cemetery on the other. Back then, it was basically, if you wanna call it that, it was segregated cemeteries, I hope you can all understand that. Thank you. That's where we're at, at that point in time, but I don't want us to be there together. Thank you. Now, the other thing I wanna mention is, uh, I would like for us, and I need to, son, here we go, to try to post all boards, all of these appointed boards throughout the city, we can post them on the website, to include their term and the expiration date of their term, that should be public knowledge, whether it's the school board, hospital board, utility board, library board, let's post all the board again, and let the citizens be able to look and see when those people are served their term, and when their term expires. They know our term when it expires for the citizens of the U.S., I think that is a no secret. And so these appointed boards and committees should not have the same thing posted over there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Earl?
There's a lot of shit going on, I have Thanksgiving, I have six houses in the neighborhood as well.
Councilwoman Harlow? Uh, yes, I should, I'm having Thanksgiving, and remember, it's not about the food, it's about the fellowship and family, and remembering being thankful where we're at, and today.
As far as announcements from you, please remember that the next council meeting is actually on Monday, December 4th, due to the Christmas very late on Christmas, and I want to reach into that when the council moves, and we'll be, uh, soon.
Yes, and nothing very much, I hear you, sir, but I'd also like to wish everyone a Thanksgiving, love you, what is nothing, it's right, love, thank you.
Scott, stand up. Put your hat back, I forgot.
We will open this evening with prayer, led by Councilwoman Harlow, and by the Legion, Lord Mayor Blaindson.
Father God, I thank you for this day, I think you've been able to gather together today to conduct business on behalf of the City of Ozark. Dear Lord, we are thankful that we are, that the community, the citizens have, um, faith and ass to do, to do right by them, and to do things according to your rules and it bears in our beliefs. And I just pray that everybody has a really good Thanksgiving holiday, whether it's visiting their family and friends, um, or going and helping with the community Thanksgiving event that's been held at the Civic Center. I just pray your blessings upon that, I pray that you be with us, dear Lord, when this, um, give us your wisdom, and remind, and remind us that those of us without sin should cast the first stone. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Sure.
It's to the flag for the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will approve the minutes from the regular council meetings held on November 7th, 2023. What are the wishes of the council?
I approve the minutes, I approve the minutes, I approve the minutes, I approve the minutes, I approve the minutes.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving these minutes? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is a ordinance, uh, with, considering the rezoning of 308 Candice Drive and 189 Heritage Road. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce an ordinance resuming, resuming of 308 Candice Drive and 189 Heritage Road from B4 to B3, and move for its adoption.
Thank you. Anybody have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on adopting the ordinance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a series of board appointments, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce an ordinance resuming, resuming of 308 Candice Drive and 189 Heritage Road from B4 to B3, and move for its adoption.
Thank you. Anybody have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on adopting the ordinance? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is a series of board appointments, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we, um, appoint the following for zoning and adjustments and industrial board development. For zoning and adjustments, that we appoint Carlson, Yonah, Paul Taylor, and Hugh Curran, and for industrial board, development board, that we appoint Dale Moeks.
Thank you. Any other motion on the floor, do I have a second? All right, do we have any further comments or discussion on the board appointments? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is a resolution declaring surplus property in the police department, for the wishes of the council.
Madam President, I introduce a resolution declaring surplus property in the police department, move for its adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on the resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is a resolution referring to positions within the fire department, what are the wishes of the council?
Now, the president has to make a motion to, uh, rename the, uh, the positions within the department for the creation of a, our maybe risk, uh, and, um, the captain, then we report the captain, who would see, I achieve, the potential to be captain.
Thank you, do I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on, uh, the addition of the position and the renaming of the positions? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine is a resolution adopting the rules and procedure for council business, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution adopting rules and procedures for council business, and move for its adoption.
Thank you, anybody have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Okay. Within a second, motion fails. Item number ten is an authorization for the mayor to execute a committee development block grant with varnished R C P. What are the wishes?
All in favor of the Rockrampers block shift, it's attached to the main development plant, environment, costume, and meat, I know that's appropriate.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this authorization? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye, or any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Please note that there is a court of court of financial reports on your packet, and, uh, with this one, final comments, Mayor? Councilman Andrew? Councilman Jackson? Councilman Earl? Councilwoman Harlow? My final comments are, we, I do wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.